Good evening, everyone. We are going to call this Board of Education meeting on November 21st through order. Ms. Giuseppe, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. Please join in the collective leadership. All right, fantastic. We're going to hear from our students, Rex Malkai and Lydia. Oh, you should have my mic. Great, go ahead.
Good evening. As we begin to turn up the heat, both at our home stand figuratively, we have some amazing updates from all quarters of the school.
Earlier today, 100 of our sophomores sent the opportunity to participate in Challenge Day, sponsored annually by the State School Climate Committee and Treasure Human Resource Services. They engaged in seventeen building activities and games, developing their skills in leadership, empathy, and SMLA, offering positive messages throughout the schools.
Needless to say, these skills are essential in events such as the annual Grandland Super Bowl, which will be held next Wednesday, November 27th, following the early dismissal from school. Students in grades 11 and 12 will be competing in a friendly game of flag football to achieve the winning title for their grade.
This isn't the only attention football game so far, you know. The next day, we'll have our annual Thanksgiving Day football game against Southern Penn. We would also like to take a second to congratulate our boys soccer team, who progressed all the way to the class L semifinals last Wednesday.
In the true Thanksgiving spirit, CHS students used the ramp time or advisory period yesterday to decorate hundreds of Thanksgiving dinner placements. These decorated placements will be brought to a local convalescent home to be used for next week's holiday dinners.
And we're definitely thankful for our CHS alumni, who will be returning to the high school for the National Honor Society's College and Career Fair on 27th. And we'll look to stick around for the concerts, because we have the CHS Gold concert on summer 3rd and the CHS Witcher Band concert on summer 17th.
And as we speak, the amazing cast and crew of Shakespeare's A Midsummer Night's Dream is starting their opening night. They'll be performing tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday night at 7:30 p.m. Tonight, we can expect a cameo of someone who looks strikingly similar to our very own Dr. Gadd. We wish them all the best.
We also wish you all the best and hope you enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Any more of the members have questions for our student than that? Mr. Ripple?
Yeah, what time does Thanksgiving start? Teddy Pop. Thank you.
Kind of just say I appreciate the enthusiasm having Thanksgiving, so right back.
Thank you.
How much are tickets for? Play, yeah. $10, thank you. Great, well, thank you both for that inspiring message, as well as all the fun activities that are going on, so. And I also want to commend you, Malkai, if you were at the science showcase.
Hey, what was it?
Yeah, yeah, okay. I was highly impressed of the presentation. Just, it's good to see that, you know, first off, science, and secondly, that you guys are deep in research early on in your student careers, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just one quick shout out, because both our Board of Education members were also acknowledged earlier this week at the superintendent's awards dinner, where there were a select group of students throughout the district who had embodied academic book personal excellency, so congratulations, man and girls.
Thank you.
Listen, up next, I think we're going to move our seats, because Dr. Solon has a presentation of the District Performance Index, so you guys are welcome to decide if you would like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roelberg. Each fall, the Connecticut State Department of Education releases their Next Generation Accountability Report. It's really a comprehensive snapshot of district performance. And tonight, we're going to go through our report from the '23-'24 school year, as we do each fall, kind of give you an update about what, how we performed this year and how the... So easy there, speaking. So if you go to the back, so yeah, it's an itchy finger over there. But so the purpose of the accountability system is to track district progress. Again, this is not just something that happens in Treasure, but in every school system across the state. It helps us to identify areas for improvement, see how we're performing relative to other school systems in our state and on our district reference group. It also promotes success and transparency in our process. And we're required to participate this under federal and state laws. So the system, again, just highlighting some of the benefits and what this really does, is expand ownership of accountability to everyone. You'll see in some of the indicators that are measured, it's not just overall district performance in the areas of math, science, reading, et cetera, but it also carves out indicators for how are your high needs students doing? Students who are multi-language learners, who receive special education support free to use lunch. So it really highlights all facets of our school community and ensures that we're paying attention to how every student is doing. So what are those twelve indicators? We can roll through this one, I mean. As I said, you know, academic achievement is really important. How is the average student performing? What sort of growth is being made within the growth identifier? When students take assessments in grades three through seven, they're given a target for the subsequent year based on large-scale data from across the state about where they should hit. How did our students do relative to that target? Participation rate is important. You have to exceed 95% participation to, or otherwise, there are penalties for that. That's never an issue for us. It measures chronic absenteeism. If you follow the Churchill Public Schools over the past year, like the rest of Connecticut, chronic absenteeism has been a real area of focus post-pandemic. After the pandemic, we saw absenteeism rates balloon across Connecticut. It's been a real area of focus. So chronic absenteeism is defined as students who miss an excessive 10% of school days, which is the equivalent of eight of the school days in Churchill Public Schools. That's incredibly high number. So when students are missing those days, they fail to thrive academically, but also socially and personally. So bringing that number down is critically important to us. Post-secondary preparation, are students at the high school level, do they have access to rigorous college-level classes? How do they perform there? Our graduation rates, our adjusted six-year cohort graduation rate. By law, students who receive special education services can extend up to the age of 22. How are those students performing? Are they graduated? How many of our students have access to post-secondary options? And of course, our physical fitness tests, which are offered in both the grades, from elementary school up through high school. How did our students perform on things like the mile run, sit and reach, sit-ups, et cetera? And then finally, parts of access. So as I said, it's really a comprehensive review of the school system. And I think the best soup and nuts indicator of the school system is success. So how did Treasure do? This is kind of like a point three thought for those of you sitting in the back. We'll make this available on our website, so it's a little bit easier to see. But there are, as you can see, many, many data points. We include breaking down different areas for high needs students and then for English proficiency and literacy and their oral proficiency for students who are acquiring another language. And so this highlights all of our different indicators. This is from '22-'23, last year. This is a comparison of how we did last year to this year. And so you can see the areas in green are areas that maintain their level of performance or they improve. I want to bring particular attention to that chronic absenteeism, because as I mentioned, the chronic absenteeism rate was an area of focus for us. So we, this is a percentage of points earned and not a percentage of students who are not chronically absent. So just to be clear there, it wasn't quite that high. But so last year, we had only earned 77% of available points in that category because we had a higher rate of chronic absenteeism for all students. This year, we got that above 90% of points. Of course, our goal is to reach 100% of points every year, meaning our chronic absenteeism would be exceptionally low. But I mentioned it being important for all students. Obviously, it's more important for students with higher needs. And so we made more than 21% of the points, actually more than 21 points per hour. That's not a percentage, because it's more than 50% where we were. But grew by more than 21, or exactly 21, points in that category. So it was definitely an area of focus for us. And we showed substantial integrity, a real testament to all of our teachers who own more of that process, communicating with families, our administrators, and our PPS teams at each of our buildings. So overall, for the state of Connecticut, how did we perform? The schools that were above us are generally schools that are in Fairfield County. But also, you know, as you say, we are ahead of West Port, Fairfield County. I think we're to be eighth in Connecticut. We are exceptionally good company there. And if you take a look at the districts who are above us, if we spent the average per pupil expenditure that those districts spent, I know many of you weren't here for the finance committee meeting before this, our budget would be $11 million higher to meet the average of the districts above us, on an annual basis. And if you even factor in the fact that, you know, there's a possibility of adjustment in Fairfield County, and you reduce that by 25%, we still need to spend $8 million a year more to match their spending, yet we compete with them in every measure. So it's a real testament to not only the talent and work of our professional staff, our support staff, but also our students and the partnership that we have with our families. It's something that we're really proud of, and obviously, we do it at an incredibly efficient level. So our rank over time, so in 2016, that was my first year at Superdick, we were 23rd in Connecticut. We needed gradual growth. The pandemic years, there was no report. A lot of the testing had been suspended at that point. We weren't in school, obviously. In the spring of 2020 school year, there was not a measure in '21. But '22 post-pandemic, we fell back from '21. Still respectful, but you can see our more recent trajectory, ninth to our current performance, which is obviously the highest it's ever been. So we're really proud of the efforts that our staff has made, our students have made to provide that club success. So one of the things that this report will set is to determine if there are any achievement gaps or participation gaps, graduation gaps between the all students and students with high needs. And they looked at what is the gap state high? That there's a factor for state of deviations? And so the next slide basically illustrates the fact that we just cannot have those gaps. Those gaps are not present, which means that certainly relative to our future across the state, our participation and our performance for our high-need students is where it should be relative to the gap. But we're always trying to close that gap, obviously. When we look at our, certainly our special education performance across the state, we are incredibly competitive there. Again, top end of performance, and then don't even intend it. So in essence, you know, in this conclusion, this is not just a healthy report, but it's a report that I think our community should be incredibly proud of. I know the people who work in our schools are proud of this performance. Not 20, the state is impressive. The state is incredible as well. Proud to share that information. Clearly, no particular questions? Thank you.
Thank you for that. There's twelve factors. One, down below, is the secondary entrance rate. What is that? So that, that measures student access to college acceptance. So they, they measure the... There are various indicators to determine college and career readiness. So you have to fit a variety of factors in order to be deep college and career readiness. It's not how the kids got into college. I don't ask you a question. Well, I can provide more information at the very top.
Yeah, just, I've said this third floor of that meetings many times. The reason I'm asking that question is for watching. I am a believer that college can be great for some kids. It can be great for some kids right after high school, maybe even later in life. But I see that post-secondary interest in it. I just want to make sure it's not, it's not, oh, we're successful because the kids went to college. Because I reject the notion that that is the exclusive way of defining success after high school. There's lots of other pathways for our grads. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, next, actually, next month, we will hold a reception for our trades partners, who we rely heavily on to host our students, people like East Coast Mechanical, Hanlon Aerospace, and Richard Chevy. Or we certainly try and connect and provide that option. But in the same, same vein, we want our students to be able to attend if they choose. Or I don't want to ever convey the idea that those skilled trades, which are in exceptional demand, require much less academic, you know, academic college entrance either, because it's not really sophisticated. So it's about the very business.
So can you just define high needs versus low needs?
Sure, high needs, students that are multi-language learners, students who receive special education services or are free to use lunch.
I just want to say thank you again, Dr. Solon, for your thorough dear and progress that day. I appreciate the transparency, the accountability, which ensures we remain focused on achieving the best possible outcomes for our students and community. Up next?
Up next would be our public comments section. Before we do so, I just want to kind of say a few things. First, on behalf of the board, I want to extend my thanks to everybody that's out here and will be speaking or participating in tonight's meeting. And truly, your presence and input reflect your dedication to the success of our schools, our students, and our community. So your feedback is invaluable, and it's going to help us refine processes, make decisions that are going to best serve our district. So I want to commend everyone in advance for maintaining respectful and constructive dialogue. Civil discourse allows us to address complex topics collectively, even when we don't always agree. And this is a really powerful example of how we can work together to make our schools and community stronger. So with that, I also need to read a disclaimer as well for the board. The Board of Education welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective, common sense, school operations, and programs that concern them. To protect the impartiality of the board, we would not permit any expression of personal complaints or defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel and students, nor against any person connected with the Churchill Public Schools. Such issues should be brought to the school administration. The board will not respond to comments made during the public comment, except to clarify issues as appropriate. And when appropriate, district administration will follow up at a later point in time. So if you do have comments, please go up to the mic and state your name and street. I'll open that to whoever wants to first.
Good evening. My name is Pam Salomon, and I'm 659 Corbin Mall Avenue. So I'm honestly here to address the recent video by teacher, former teacher, if you couldn't see Annie Dunleavy. Dr. Solon, and I say this up front, Dr. Solon, to you, because I think I know you well enough, and I actually have a lot of respect for you. I'm not here to necessarily come down on you to the nth degree, but I don't feel things were handled well. And I feel that you do know how to handle things, quite honestly. So I'm hoping you guys can respond to these questions tonight and not sit quiet, because I don't think that helps the community if you do sit quiet. So any responses you guys can give, I think would be beneficial to the school district and the town. Your email that came out about a week before everything happened, in terms of the election, I should say, you had a statement that said, "We will continue to educate our children about appropriate civil discourse and maintain disciplinary standards when discourse becomes ridicule or harassment." I think in terms of her video, we can all agree it was way above ridicule or harassment. So some of the questions I have that I'm hoping will get answered tonight for everybody is why were the police not notified until Monday? Sometime later on Monday, is my understanding. Versus immediately seeing that the video, when you saw the video on Friday, as a matter of fact, it was parents who first notified the police, not the school district. Why were parents not notified before the start of school on Monday? I know there were parents who actually did not send their kids to school on Monday. We talk about tardiness and kids not being in school, yet there were parents who didn't feel safe to send their kids to school on Monday. A simple email, even if you did have legal counsel advising you to not say certain things, you could have not mentioned the name of the teacher, but mentioned that there's a situation that you're aware of, and due to the utmost safety of the kids, we want to assure you that this teacher is not in school or anywhere within the district, not just removed from Highland, but, or, I'm sorry, Chapman, but any, any other school. I just want to make sure she was not placed elsewhere as well. Police presence, just a thought for someone here tonight. My understanding is there was no police officer at Chapman that morning to maybe just reassure parents of a little more safety for their children. The email you sent out Monday, late in the day, really defended her. Didn't mention anything at that point about the safety and security of the kids in the favor of your utmost priority. And I understand, you are correct, that you're hired to work with the school district to protect the town and the school district against lawsuits and, and rest of the district. You have a big job. However, the safety of the kids, I don't care if we impaled because we didn't handle something correctly with her. The safety of everybody should have come before, even that concern, in my opinion. Her contract should have had a just cause clause. I'm not sure if everyone knows what that is. My understanding with just cause is it protects the school to some degree of liability if you were to have fired her due to this video quickly, considering, taking into consideration the serious nature of that video. The just cause clause is something you all should look into if you have not or you're not aware of that. And if it's not in their contracts, I would highly suggest that these contracts include that in the future. And then, you know, lastly, because I did hear this, and I myself have a son, and I see it, this happened to me, that even in Enfield yesterday, they had a situation in school where they immediately did a lockdown. Police were notified immediately, and then parents were sent out a text message as soon as they knew that the school was secure and the students were safe, even though the child did not make any threats of the sort that Annie Dunleavy did. But if this had been a male student, and I'm not saying this to inflame anything, but it's a serious something for us to look at. If a male student had sent a video like this or had posted it, my guess is that that person would have been arrested, who would have been to their house and would have arrested him. She really got away scot-free, if you think about it, because she, my understanding is because you let her resign, she then has nothing on her record. So I'm hoping it's not the case that she's going to be allowed to go teach elsewhere and kind of get away with it. I'm just hoping you guys can answer these questions tonight, so that the community can kind of let this go down. And Dr. Solon, again, I'm not doing this to be disrespectful. I know you can do your job, I know you do it well, but I just don't think we handled this well.
We'll have Dr. Solon respond. If there's other speakers, I'd like to get everybody up, if you don't mind, thank you. Whoever's up next, please state your name and street.
My name's Amy Gordon, I'm 35, apparently, in Treasure. And similar to what Pam Salomon was just talking about, and also here to discuss the events that happened as a result of Annie Dunleavy's video. And my concern is how it was addressed. When I called to inform the Treasure Police Department, it sounded as if I was the first home call in regards to the video, as the officer indicated that to me. He said I was the first person that called and provided the video and email to the chief and to the deputy chief, because the chief was out of town or out of his duties that day. So when the officer called me back, he did indicate that I was the first person that he was calling back, and that he had seen the video and immediately been looking into it. I asked that he, please make sure that he found out where she was and gave a visit to her house to help. As I checked, at the very first glance of the video to me, from an untrained eye, she seemed to be someone that was in crisis and being under the influence of something, but clearly angry and determined to make sure that she reported that and sends it out to a group of people, which I don't want to have a lot of discussion surrounding that. I think that the context versus the content should be separated with a video like this. If someone makes graphic comments in the video, I don't think that we should weigh this heavily on who it was intended for, but is there credibility to the threats that are made? And now that, now that this video has been propagated, what do we do with it? Is it credible? Who should be evaluating that? And in my eyes, it's law enforcement who's trained to do that. No offense, Dr. Solon, I think that this is probably something that should have been turned over immediately when we found out about it, just because... turned over immediately when we found out about it, just because the trust with the parents that voted for Trump, that stucked for him, that worked on his campaign, that volunteered, that are outward Republicans, like Republicans on this committee, they deserve to have the safety evaluated, credibility of the threat evaluated first and foremost. And that should have been very transparent throughout the process, which we feel that it wasn't. We felt that it seems like the liability of the actions that were taken by herself and the district was put on student administration, faculty and staff, and student safety. And I think that that is probably where we need to begin to refine the process to make sure that something like that doesn't happen again. I'm not big on hypotheticals, but what if she was on the other foot? And someone like me made those comments about somebody in the community that voted for Paris? I can look through all of the eyes and tell you I would have been arrested, without doubt. And this would have been called into the police probably by five or six of you, and I would have been arrested. And so, we not only think that this wasn't handled poorly, but there's a clear bias that seems pretty evident to people across the aisle from some of you. And so, I wonder why you didn't call it into the police when you found out about it? And if you didn't, we'd like to know why. We'd like to know what policy you're citing on that, what excuse you're given, you know, what is it that prevented everybody from coming to the conclusion that this was the job of the Cheshire Police Department to decide the credibility of that threat versus a bunch of elected officials? So, we'll be following up on that. I know people have filed the Freedom of Information Act requests, and we certainly expect those to be fulfilled. I think I already touched upon the correspondence, it just sounded pretty callous, and it sounded as if liability was paramount to the staff and student safety. I do believe in due process, but I also know that Dr. Solon could have put someone on paid leave, in this case maybe, immediately, as part of the police investigation that should have been happening. So, the comments that the investigation were protracted as a result of the media, news cameras, and everybody, you know, calling in and news teams calling in and requiring for answers, I think that was unfair statement, because it was protracted, because it would be calling in to the police was delayed until Monday, as far as we know. I think that's pretty much it. And Pam hit a lot of the bases on that, but parents are upset about this, and this room isn't entirely full, so I can tell you that my email inbox is full, my text messages are full, my instant messages are full. And I proudly fielded 50 phone calls in one week about this. And people are frustrated, and they just want to know that there were some gaps that we need to close up in case this happens again. I know there's some other folks in the audience who are talking about books and curriculum. A big one that was the hot button in the fall was the absolutely true story of, a real-life story of an Indian or something like that, I don't know. But there's some language and things in there. A phrase that's, that's in the book, creative license of the author, called a tree fag. And so, now our students in Cheshire are learning what a tree fag is. And there've been some comments made by librarians at the high school that they can't control what they see on TikTok, and they can't control what they see on social media, but sure as heck can control what they see in the library. And if the students start calling each other tree fags, it's going to be because of that book, not because of something they saw on TikTok, not because a parent taught it to them, but because it's in the book. And there's a list of over 100 books that are controversial that have language like that, that we should be buying the redacted versions for the district. We insist on them having an educational value to a student group. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? Karen Cool, I am still four, about 45 years out here. My comments about the teacher are one thing. I feel that the new town shooting was an example, so if she was out of control, what if something happened like that? We did nothing. The next subject is Duffinger books the library has, referencing queer gender and other names. You can get it anytime at the library. These shouldn't be in our kids' hands. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't even be near our kids. Something will be done at the library. We're going to get the books, we're going to invite the parents, and see how they, what they think their children should be reading.
Oh, Cheshire Public Library?
Cheshire Public, high school, dad, wall on the shelf. Sir, in every school, it's a shame. I'm disgusted by that for this.
Anybody else to comment?
Sorry. Mr. George Wallace, I have an ask in 61 Tull Avenue. I want to speak a little bit about threat assessment, which is, I think, a concept that most people don't understand very well. One of my roles is, I am a psychologist and a BA in psychology, and I'm chair of the employee threat assessment team. And the very first thing that was told to me when I took that position and agreed to do this kind of work, which I've done on the outside in private practice with multinational companies as well, is that nobody would ever be happy with what you do, because both sides have rights, both sides have incentives in terms of what they want to happen, and there are legal requirements with regards to what you can release at certain times. And if anybody is ever looking to be happy with the people tasked to make those decisions, it just won't, because nobody will be happy. Part of that problem has to do with the concept of risk, the concept of whether or not an individual feels a particular statement qualifies as being a risk statement, whether it qualifies as being necessary in terms of indicating that there is an actual identified threat versus a statement that somebody makes in, when they're upset, when they think they're talking among their friends, when they're distressed about something that's occurred there. And there are legal requirements in terms of how you must receive, in terms of evaluating that. There are legal requirements which you must do for an individual who is in distress to make sure that they are taken care of. And I can guarantee, although I cannot speak of specifics, that statements are much worse than what's stated in that particular video, which I have a chance to interview, that people do not lose their jobs. They do not get reported to everybody in the facility. They get help for things that they are struggling with, or a plan is made in order to rectify the problem as before. That is a requirement that is a federal, that is a requirement on most HR resources in terms of human resources law. I do not have any direct information in terms of what the board did, but the manner in which what I saw that was presented in the public, and the time that it was done in the public, is very similar to the manner in which we present information to people when it is necessary. I may not be the most popular person in the world at work all the time, and I have heard many people call my office and say, "Why aren't you doing these separate things?" And the truth of the matter is, oftentimes, I have to say, I can give it a affirmative denial, but I make sure you didn't put any things to this individual, or something that was said either externally or within the unit. So again, although I don't have any direct knowledge of what the board did in this particular instance, there was nothing in terms of what I saw in the emails or in terms of their actions that violated the way you perceive it.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak? No one else? Again, I'd like to thank you guys for coming out, expressing your concerns, offering some advice for future policy adjustments and so forth. I will ask if Dr. Solon, as much as he can, to answer some of the questions that are out there. If he can, do so publicly. If not, I'd highly encourage that you call the superintendent's office directly with whatever situation that pretend you may have, but if you can do so, Dr. Solon, to address.
Sure. In terms of evaluating threats, it is something that, you know, unfortunately we do on a pretty regular basis. My personal background is I do have the National Security Council, psychological services, extensive training in threat assessment, as do our administrators and mental health professionals. I'm not sure what time anybody else identified the police on Monday, you know, reevaluating the situation, including contacting the teacher, and didn't, even in the threat. The idea that the police make different decisions based on your political views is something that I would let chief drive respond to. That has not been my experience with them, but certainly he could better articulate the perspective, so the police department on that. They determine if people get arrested. The superintendent does not. That's not something that's within my purview. And she was not at school or any school on Monday. And the idea that, you know, I might compromise student safety, protect our interests, is insulting, frankly. But, you know, that's sort of paramount for us, and if you handle things in that manner. With respect to the just cause part of the contract, you can't terminate people for cause. The statements that are made, evaluated with respect to free speech rights. I don't call dispatch when I've got a police issue that we're trying to address. I'll call some of the professionals that I work with in the department. Usually, our school resource officers are one of the first calls, or I contact the chief directly. I don't call dispatch, so, you know, dispatch probably wouldn't know about it. The, you know, with respect to a student in field, I say nothing about that, I can't comment on that, just don't know anything about it. There are laws that dictate how we manage employment versus how we manage student situations. I think that in each case, we evaluate the circumstances within the bounds of the law, and we operate as conveniently and as we move to address those situations. And, you know, the police department, they make those determinations about what happens with arrest. With respect to employment, we work very closely with our people council to make determinations. And I know that in my follow-up letter to the community on Wednesday, I was more explicit about why my initial communication on Monday was framed the way it was. The content of that video was important, but I couldn't, I wasn't in a position where I could say that without compromising the school system on that. And so, I did. In terms of the teacher being able to get another job or not, and that's also beyond my control, whether or not they get hired by somebody else, if the state were to evaluate it, there are no charges against her. I don't know that they would ever pull her certification, but that's, again, on the side of my purview. That's something, a decision that the state would make. I don't, I don't have that level of authority to rescind a teacher's certification or anything like that. So, you know, I, I think hindsight is always 20/20, and we evaluate, especially in situations like this that are really significant from a lot of different perspectives, is to how we can ensure the safety. I think one of the things that bothers me most is that, you know, the statement rattled people in our community, its spirit of people in our community. It undermined confidence of people, not only in our community, but broader in what educators do for our students and families and that. That's, the entire thing is really hurtful, and it's cost a lot of us sleep for myself, for people I care about, some people in this room, I'm sure a lot of you. And so, we continue to evaluate this and determine how we can improve on anything that we could potentially improve on, or address laws that may need to be reviewed or, you know, just in all aspects of what we do, because we take what we do incredibly seriously. And nothing is more important than the trust that our community has in our staff, in our people, and I feel terrible because that was compromised. And if anything I did to foster that feeling, then I apologize for that. That's not something that, you know, we wake up in the morning aspiring to do on the bill. So, I appreciate, you know, the many people in our community who are doing their best to, who pass this, and if people still have concerns, as Ms. Rose was saying, I'm sure people call my office and we can address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Solon. I'd also ask just, you know, we all have state mandates, and we're supposed to follow them, even if they are mandated. I also really appreciate if any of you could address this to the state board or the CSD in support of us, because some things are, like Dr. Solon said, are pretty much out of our state of influence, so to speak. So, again, thank you for coming out and addressing it publicly. With regards to the book comments, if at all possible, and I know our next committee report is actually curriculum, but if Ms. Lano could kind of give us process with regards to how books are selected and so forth?
How about now? So, many of our books, like one book that's on tap for this evening, come through the curriculum committee and then come to the full board for approval. Other books, like books in our circulation, in our library, are usually gleaned from a lot of the lists that are out there from other libraries. We communicate pretty nicely with our public library. We don't offer everything that the public library has, but we do have a pretty good selection. I can't speak to the list that, you know, you're talking about, but some of those are in our, some of those may be in our circulation, I would have to see. A lot of these books are evaluated by, a lot of these books are evaluated by the teachers. Comes up through that way. Teachers will read these books, they're looking at the standards and thinking about what books they want to put into our curriculum. Teachers sort of pull some, they have some books that are required, and then there are other books that are not required reading. In a lot of cases, students can self-select a book, and teachers will work with students to select those books. And as we've done in the past year, in recent years, if there's a book that a parent or a family is not in favor of their child reading, our teachers have always worked with the families to select another option. So, there's sort of two tracks. There's the curriculum options, and then there are the things that are in circulation and the library. Does that answer your question?
Great, thank you. If anybody has questions, you can call directly to, for the, yes, you can call. Great. The items on the agenda are the committee reports, so I am actually going to pass the microphone over to Ms. Colan, the chair of the committee.
Thank you. Tonight, we will... Tonight, we'll be reviewing minutes from our past two curriculum committee meetings. The first one, October 21st, and for New Business, that night, we did look at a new textbook recommendation, The Accent of the Human and Navy of Physiology, 13th edition. We have a very long discussion on it, and we tabled it to come back during the November meeting to review the actual text to take a look at it. We also... We also discussed some program of study changes at Cheshire High School. Dr. Reed provided an overview of the recommended course changes and level changes for the 25, 26 school year at Cheshire High School program of studies. We also had an update on multilingual learners. Mr. Handland provided us with the enrollment numbers for 2024, 25 school year. We have a total of 159 MLs in the district, up from 129 the previous year. We also discussed Algebra One resource. There is a already Algebra One pilot phase in development and Cheshire is part of the pilot program. We had the PASS period letter reviewed and unfortunately, due to the hurricane down in Florida, a class trip from Cheshire High School, which was scheduled between February 12th to the 18th, 2025, is now moved to the spring of 2026. We also had an update from Assistant Superintendent on informational items that can ask her to review for us.
Sure. The, the update that I provided was on some of our efforts in manufacturing technology. Shared that we have a new career in technology education department chair in Tom Libow. Talked about the summit that we attended along, we were given some grant money to attend through the Institute for Real World Education and Curriculum Advancement. This is an office that sits at Southern Connecticut State University and they're there to help educators create an awareness of career opportunities. And so we had some really nice connections that day to help and support our teachers on making some pathways, continuing or improving our pathways in manufacturing. We also talked about our strategic planning committee, which is looking at two things this year. We are looking at delving deeper into the Anxious Generation, a book that many community members have attended our book clubs. And we are also looking at artificial intelligence in public schools and how our, our teachers, our, our staff, our students, what the appropriate use of AI will be. And then we talked about our educator professional growth plan. And lastly, shared about some work that we were invited to do through the Connecticut Association of Public School superintendents and a presentation that I had given on our curriculum writing institute.
And our November meeting, again, we reviewed under old business, The Essentials of Human Nappy Physiology textbook. We again had some questions. We did review the sections of the course and also the continuum of courses that will be held, that will be offered to our students in the science areas. Also under informational items, we heard some results of the PASS survey, which we will at a later meeting go through in detail for you. Science pathways, again, I said, we did listen to an updated science course pathway for students in Cheshire High School. Elementary report card was discussed by Mr. Handland and provided information about changes to the grade five report card. I know that was very brief overview. So going to ask our Assistant Superintendent if she would like to add anything? So that's the end of the report on the curriculum committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Colman. Thank you, Ms. Lano. Just a really quick question. The Essentials of Human Nappy Physiology, that's just an updated version of the existing textbook? The older, the old version, the old, the, the previous textbook was outdated. So the committee came together and evaluated multiple resources. This was their top choice and they presented that at the meeting. Or I should say, Julie, our, our department chair presented that. Great, thank you. Next curriculum report is finance. I'm sorry. I, I should also mention that the book, the textbook is on review that the curriculum office, at the public library and also at Cheshire High School, and it is out for review for two weeks to the public before it comes to the board. Great, thank you for the reminder. Next is finance. So Dr. Harrigan and Mr. Rasciano, you're going to discuss finance report and, and medical benefits.
Yeah, so the financial report, first I will direct you, included in your packets tonight, is the financial report for the 2024, 25 Ford Education Budget reflecting expenditures and encumbrances through October 31st, 2025. With that, I will pass it off to Mr. Rasciano for the, for the overview. And since that's where the questions will be directed, I'm sure the quick overview. So, Mr. Rasciano, if you would, do the honor.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I will add just very quickly before the finance report, we're holding actually very well to our budget. The official budget is $8.5 million through the month of October, so four months in, we've expended and encumbered about 77% of the budget. And we are keeping our expenditure cap. We're not payroll at 50% at this time. So everything is looking quite, quite solid, you know, through the first four months of the year. Hopefully that trend will continue. I did note in this month's financial overview report that medical claims did come in high this month. So I will jump right to medical benefits claims and then we can come back if there are questions on the finance report or medical benefits claims. So for the month of October, our claims were expected at $1.2 million, that is our budget for each month of the year. Claims did come in at $1.81 million. So that is substantially higher than what was expected. Unfortunately, it is a record high medical claims month. Our reserve balance, where we started, a year of $2.34 million has decreased to $1.38 million. So that gives us about $1.16 months in reserves. As a board, not as we like to be, two months of reserves. So we've dropped below. One of the things that we would point out is $1.8 million of claims this month was driven by one significantly high claim. And we will receive stop loss reimbursement of $250,000 because we have insurance claims over $175,000. So that will help buoy the reserve by the $250,000. We are coming to the point here where we start working on next year's budget for medical benefits. And so as a result of that, we have meetings that were previously scheduled with our benefits consultant as well as signee representatives. So we'll be exploring, you know, not so much only this month's claims, but, you know, a trend this year is an average claims of $1.49 per month. We should be running at $1.2 based on what was expected and what we budgeted. So we'll be going through that detail. I did give board members a little bit of heads up that as we prepare next year's budget, these claims that are running above this year's expected will drive an increase in next year's budget as well. So as always, we'll keep our eye and do the best we can to report out. There's not much we can do to change the trajectory of claims as the year progresses. And we, over the years, have always worked to try and make improvements out of medical claims, trying to build some efficiencies, offer significant help and wellness opportunities to prevent large plans from occurring. But at the end of the day, there's really not a lot we can do if someone has, you know, severe illness, including cancer. So I will stop there and if there are any questions in the report, we'd like to answer.
I'll go over to my right, Mr. Gribble or Mr. White?
The end?
All right, please.
Tim usually gets, gets the first question. So yeah, as far as the medical benefits, so our, our current expenditures are, as Catherine said, at 76% it sounded like. So are we concerned that, are we, you know, years past where we had a severe physical difficulty? Are you, do you have any concern that we may have to freeze if these medical losses continue? Because this is a significant run.
As I sit here today, it's certainly a thought that we may have to buoy the reserve by contributing additional money from our operating budget. But I, I think it's a little bit premature. Let's see what happens over the next couple of months claims. But that is one of the reasons why we always begin the year with this expenditure cap. We, you know, had expected that we would keep this expenditure cap on at 50% through the summer, and that's exactly what we'll do. If we need to extend that, we can. Again, when we have an expenditure cap, all that means is that we prioritize our expenditures. And as we get through the year, the budget still is holding solid, we'll increase that cap so that, you know, departments and the schools can make the necessary purchases and expenditures they need. We try not to compromise services to the extent that it would be hurtful to students.
Just another quick point on that. The vast majority of our employees are on a high level of health plan. The review is in January, where at this point in the calendar year, most people have expended their, you know, drugs along, so there's no lot of pocket expense. That initiates again in January, but for most of our employees will be in that position. And typically, while there's no guarantees, we'll be able to spend rate declines in January through March, so figures cross, that repeats itself. And, you know, obviously we're keeping a very close eye on the level of summer claims.
Mr. Gribble, do you have any more questions? Ms. White, I see that.
Thank you. If I could circle back to a question I forgot to ask during the finance update, it was a topic that was mentioned. We're on finance now, so it'd be appropriate. One of the things you had described was a change in our costs this year relating to substitute teachers. We're now getting paid, paid leave, which is offered by our service provider, Kelly Services, right?
Correct.
Okay. So there's that cost of the paid leave that Kelly is covering. Would we, if, if we insourced that, there'd be an administrative cost of ours. Do you have any idea if that would be more or less than the cost of that paid leave?
Well, the paid leave.
Or is it, I mean, if it's too big of an administrative burden, you can just tell me that too.
Well, the reason we outsource it is because it was, you know, not only an administrative burden, but it was difficult keeping a short pool of substitutes. So, you know, the work to Kelly has definitely benefited our district. Our substitute fill rate is, is above 90% this year. It took several years, you know, to get there. The question on the Connecticut paid leave that now affects people who work as substitutes for Kelly Services, every 30 hours that someone works with Kelly Services is entitled to one hour of sick leave. And that's, so Kelly's revenues or Kelly's profit from our account, if they make one, is negatively affected. So that, that's a negotiating point. That's not, they're not passing that along directly to us. It is one of the things though that will drive our renewal, as does the increase of the medical wage January 1st.
No, thank you. I, I certainly, I mean, I appreciate if they get paid leave, but at the same time, we have to watch our costs here. But thank you. And I, I was just, I don't know, I didn't, I don't think I heard you mention it. I could have missed it. Update on energy performance contracts?
So we, you know, did issue the bid for the new energy performance contract 2.0. We had a, an initial visit by vendors last week and that's continued into this week. We have five different vendors that have expressed interest. The bids from those vendors are due December, I don't remember the date, but this, in next month, we'll have the initial proposals from those vendors.
And I know, this is just a comment, no question, but I've been mentioning these things along the way in terms of maybe as comprehensive as possible. One big thing that I think I've mentioned, but I just want to make sure it's on the radar and hopefully included in the RFP, is the potential for using virtual net metering and just buying our electricity offsite. It doesn't have to be, my understanding is it would not have to be in Cheshire, beginning wherever source territory. But the point is, we can lock in a contract. It may not have any escalator in it. You can structure it different ways. But I think if we got a good rate and we could lock any part of our budget in place without any escalation, I think that could be really helpful to us. So if you could just make sure that that's on your radar. Because, and the reason I say this is because it wouldn't necessarily be looking for, looking at or linked to any of our billings. It'd be separate from our budget.
Well, I, I will comment that the RFP is so all encompassing that the options, including receiving funding from school construction grants, ever-source incentives, incentives under the Inflation Reduction Act, it's all included in that RFP. When we get through this next phase and the energy service company is selected to go through a much deeper review, I just want to remind you that there'll be a committee that's formed that includes members of the board, the council, and the energy commission that will be front and center reviewing all the options and the cost measures that are recommended and then, you know, whatever related additional incentives that we might get beyond the traditional ever-source incentives. So you'll be part of that, I would think. Imagine if you would volunteer for that work. I could be out there on a limb on that.
He's going to be about to hold us in any concern.
Very good.
Ms. Gergini, did you have that?
Yeah. What I think was asking, I have the answer right there. Looking at our comp balances, I can see the answers to a lot of them. Past years, you've got a expenditure percentage limit, budget pressures, and so forth. Can we do a limit yet for this year? We're not really holding back.
No, no, we're, the, the cap is 50%.
Socially, yes. And, you know, so in other words, if the medical, the medical claims can arise at a certain point, we possibly increase that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gergini. Okay, were there any other questions? So we're going to move on to the next committee was planning. This is really exciting. Mr. Ege, kind of give us a little update as well too.
All right, so we had a joint meeting with the town council planning committee and established the naming process for the North End School. So the town council is going to post for a open forum to take recommendations of names for the new school using an established policy that the town has for needing buildings. There will be a, there will be a meeting where people can bring forward recommendations they've already received. The way the policy is written, if you receive three letters from three different people with the same name, that person's on the list, right now, Marty Martin's on that list. I do not believe we have anybody else at this point. But if anyone has the input, there is going to be a meeting in January, I believe, the council will post. And we will see nominations or names. Then the joint planning committees will make a recommendation for the town council to go around. We will obviously bring that back to the board as well in the discussions. I believe before we bring that back to the council, we're going to get together and talk about it. I believe that was the timing on that. And then. And then the council makes the ultimate decision based on, I think, based on our team joint planning committee recommendation. At this time, we are just looking at naming the North End School. There's that discussion about renaming other schools, including Island and Orphan, but right now we're just looking at that.
Thank you, Mr. Gribble. Any more questions? Yeah, it's really exciting because we're getting closer and closer. And as our chief operating officer reminded us at that meeting, that we only have six months to get it together and get a name. So thanks then for that reminder. I also, I informed Dr. Solen about this because I'm a huge pro parent voice in there. And so we're going to try to at least establish something prior to those open forums so that there's an awareness. And we encourage and want to solicit recommendations so that we have a large amount of recommendations to lead through that. It will be a difficult decision. And as of right now, we only have one, so please start thinking, start spreading the word. And I believe we'll be posting that in, in Jan- January of twenty twenty five. And then follow up with that, and Dr. Solen will probably do some work in making sure our, our parents are aware of that process. Did you want to add something, Dr. Solen, or Mr. Eicky?
Yes, I just want to throw in as well that there, there are specific parameters that are, that are spelled out in the policy that will be included in the notice when the, for the meeting.
Mr. Gribble, sorry.
Awesome. So thank you for the intermission, because Pat Chupin gave all the opportunity to name new schools this time. So again, we're all going to go to say some suggestions and sort of, and suppose we can listen to the council. You have such a-
Is it fifty percent? So this is where I strongly encourage social media usage. Just spread the word for us, please. Does there something you want to add to? Great, thank you. Next committee, we have policy. So Mr. Eicky, you're back on.
All right. So we have a lot going on in policy. We talked about first reading policies, fingerprinting. This is all correct and remounted after Solen. These are all just being compliant with current law.
The fingerprinting?
Yeah.
Fast but in alternative inappropriate, the social media and nothing.
Okay. And the social media, have you got change anything? Is there just language?
A couple of, you know, terms with the advisement from our council.
Okay. The center meeting for sexual harassment, suspension, expulsion, that is, those were being compliant with current law as well. Correct, yes. And we are still working on the equity and diversity policy. We are waiting here at our attorney to make sure that our language is appropriate. That's it for now.
Mr. Gribble?
I would like to suggest to Sharon Eicky and to Dr. Solen. I'm guessing that there's been significantly legal discovery over the last couple of weeks about the incident with our now former employee. And I would recommend that we pull any policy that may have been affected by legal discovery because it seemed like even in the social network and policy, we were looking at it like live time while that situation was going on and, you know, discussions that are, you know, on tape that were like, well, you know, maybe kind of have to hold off and kind of see what happens because even the social networking policy that was set to that probably had to, probably would have to change. So I would just make the recommendation over the next series of months, I guess, to, to sort of identify the policies that would be affected by this situation so that we can be better prepared to deal with the situation. Not that we weren't, but we were sort of, you know, really depending on legal counsel a lot of time where now we can be, be in a position where we really have documents that sort of reflect the reality of the laws of this state of Connecticut and possibly even, you know, federal law as well.
Thank you. Mr. Eicky, did you have any?
Yeah, we did have some question. As we were discussing that, at that time, there was language that I thought could have been strong. But there's question of whether legally it was strong enough. There's difference between what our policy said and what the law said. I think that's something we can discuss in the next policy.
Yeah, this is an opportunity to be more proactive, like Mr. Gribble said, and not reactive. So thank you for the report. I don't know, Jefferson, do you want to add anything? You might have missed.
All right, you're covered.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Does anyone have a question? I just want to make a general comment that we've been sitting on this equity and diversity policy for a while now. And I'm hoping that we can get that off for a third and final meeting and a vote really soon on our next couple of meetings.
Thank you. Next item, if there are any other standing committees that board members don't believe, you all hit. I actually want to just divert really quick to Mr. Gribble. He has a committee update surprise.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for those who sent the questions. So we're looking at the House of Legal issues, such as, for, just things around the session procedure, as well as, you know, social media events, and what seems to be the law based on the case. But, I mean, there, we have a, December third is a new board member leadership conference. I think the session should have, he hasn't appeared, a lot of sessions and information. Yeah, I came up at, and it's a lot of giving, not just the situation in Cheshire last week, but several. In Connecticut, I was mentioning, a lot of boards are thinking that I have to policy because some boards in the state have revised the social networking policies sometime. There's been reasons for so, if I had a key policy, showing the rest of the boards to look with positive identity in the course of the boards and attorneys to ensure the policy's sound, which comes to those in Congress. So I'm not saying that it was, it wasn't our service meeting.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And the other announcement is that there is a calendar committee meeting, speaking of December third, Mr. Gribble. We have one here at seven P M. in the central office boardroom. I believe Dr. Solen and buddies have gone out for those members already. Oh, we, we're still kind of selecting members. Okay, we're in the selection process still. Okay. We're going to add more to the committee. We did have a small committee last time, but we feel again it was imperative for us to add more voices to it. So, Mr. Zensky will update us. That's established. Thank you. Next item is the approval of minutes. If more members could look at minutes from last meeting. And we are going to need to call for motion to approve the minutes of both October seventeenth and November seventh, twenty twenty four. We can just have somebody, Mr. Gribble, motion?
Move that the Church Board of Education approve the minutes on the meetings held on October seventeenth and November seventh, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second, Ms. Covenant? Are there any additions or corrections that need to be paid each of those minutes? Let's give it a little bit of time. Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote to approve as presented. Always in favor of the minutes for the motion on the floor, please raise your hand. I believe you have the unanimous vote. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Secretary, were there any correspondence that you could share with us?
There was. Although we had, we all received numerous emails regarding the former employee last week. Only one was asked and we read into the record. So I will do that now. To the Board of Education members, as a parent of children at Chapman Elementary School, I am extremely disappointed in the response to the video that was posted by a Chapman teacher. There was a clear threat made in the video with a very delayed response from the administration to the situation and how our children would be kept safe. Once we finally received communication, this teacher seemed to be defended in that her video was intended to be private. Nothing a person chooses to post online is private. Overall, I'm disappointed, disappointed in the administration's response and the teachers' actions were clearly wrong. The number one priority is to keep our children safe at school, and the hesitation by administration is concerning. Thank you for your time, Sharon Church.
Thank you.
Who's first one?
Thank you, Mr. Gribble. Up next, Superintendent, you're welcome.
Thank you. They wasn't able to give a superintendent report. I was in the last meeting. We had our showcase at the high school. But I was out of town visiting my son for parents weekend. We've got an awful lot going on as usual in that showcase. I know Sammy referenced Malachi, a group that was showing some of the science work that we were doing. As we speak, we have a group of students traveling in Seoul, South Korea, in part of a science team that's giving a presentation on various labs that they've done. So that's really exciting. And, you know, I can't believe Sungwoo is all the way here and visiting. But we're, we're also proudly welcome Sungwoo, who's here as an answer from South Korea, at the school. We held a panel discussion on the anxious generation. I can't remember if that was last month or earlier this month. But we had about a hundred and fifty people show up. And I will tell you, in my twenty years as an administrator in the general public school system, where the comments I get a lot from parents is about, you know, I didn't want my, my child a cell phone at such an early age. But they also didn't want them ostracized because all their friends have them and everything. Our administrative team sort of did a virtual meeting with a company called Pinwheel. There are a couple of other options as well. They manufacture phones that look like normal cell phones. They don't look childish. They have texting and phone capabilities and location capabilities for parents who want to track where their child is. But there's way more direction from the parent as to what apps to add and if you want to add different things. So I'll be sharing something with our parent community. So, because I do know, you know, like I said, in my industry, that's a real concern that our parents have. And I just want to make sure they're aware of that option is part of some of the next steps we've taken around anxious generation. The, unfortunately, last week we had a postponed meeting with Doug Levens, the executive director of the Cheshire Y, and John Gollik, the director of the Cheshire Public Park and Rec. And we'll be having that meeting actually tomorrow to talk about what we can do to provide more opportunities for free playtime around the community. The schools are really the park and rec, if you will, our facilities for the community as we enter into the winter. How do we provide more options for kids and the parents to just engage in our structure and playtime? The, Tony already talked a little bit about the Board of Education. It's the Economic Association of Public Schools superintendent in the Economic Association Board of Conference besides Friday. He was really a tremendous speaker that's available on the C T N network, if you Google it. Tim Schreiber oversees, is certainly very involved in Special Olympics. He gave a really interesting keynote about dignity. I would encourage you to check it out. It's really well done. But I also want to acknowledge our Board of Education here. Heard acknowledgement, distinction from the, from CAE for the excellent work that they do. Matt Rafferty, taken with the Commissioner of Education, that's our third consecutive year receiving that honor. The only three years I should have ever received that honor, so congratulations to you guys. Today was seemingly Artificial Intelligence Day in the Cheshire Public Schools because Burling brought in a tremendous speaker from Ed Advance, Matt Mervis, who does podcasts on artificial intelligence. And it's really insane, frankly, to think about all the things that we can do. The opportunities and pitfalls are at home. And so it is something that we're, as educators, trying to wrap our heads around. At the same time, Mr. Vassiana was at the SNACT conference, the School Nutrition Association of that, at SNACT Athlete League, and was also, along with Spaler and others, taking in a presentation on how artificial intelligence impacts operations in food service. So a lot of interesting stuff going on, again, opportunities and pitfalls and how to manage that. I already mentioned that we had the superintendent's awards there earlier this week. This is American Education Week. And we were thrilled to recognize so many outstanding students and their guest teachers. It's always one of the highlights of the year, certainly to acknowledge those incredible students. But this year, we had about a half dozen guest teachers that were there, invited by those honored students who happened to graduate from Cheshire High School. So really cool. We talked a little bit about school construction. We have our round break in ceremony coming up in a matter of weeks, actually, for the North End and for North School on December sixteenth at noon. There is a weather date on December eighteenth. Our goal is to livestream that event, too, but people are welcome to visit the sites. And hopefully the weather cooperates as we pick off a really exciting period for the Cheshire Public Schools. That's it.
Questions for Dr. Solen, Mr. Eicky?
Thank you. So first comment about your work with the kids, with the parents in anxious generation. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate you also mentioning next steps following the meeting. Late October is when we have it. I don't know if you mentioned it, but just one thought for next steps is the PTAs. I think are a great pathway for taking the ball and running with it. And I think that is happening in North School, my elementary school. I thought, I, I mentioned it before, I got an email from a resident here who's talking about his grandson who is in third grade. My son's in third grade, so I can relate to this. He, his grandson recently got a student in his class who does not speak a word of English. I'll say the country, Afghanistan. My guess is it may very well be, you know, related to what we were doing over there for the last two years. I don't know that to any taste. I want to say I, the concern of the parent is since the student doesn't speak any English, it's most likely, the student most likely be taking more time. This is what he's thinking, the student take more time than the other students in the class will. And will the other kids be sort of, hurt may not be the right word, miss out on something because of that? And so that's the concern. I share that concern. At the same time, I want to say that I am a, coming from Afghanistan, coming from Ukraine. We have students here from Ukraine in Cheshire. I want to say that I personally am a huge supporter- Ukraine in Cheshire. I want to say that I personally am a huge supporter of legal immigration and opening our arms and bringing, allowing people to come to this country, particularly in situations like that. I have zero references in my bookshelf. Some did ten years ago overseas and fighting for it. And alternative is if we allow people to come here or when we're ready. So what we're doing by allowing legal immigration here, this is an end result of it. There's a cost involved with it. And his, his grandson is bearing the burden that, which I don't like that, but this is all, you know, it's, it's a balancing act. In terms of best, you know, best possible outcomes. So my question for you, because I do think it's a very legitimate concern about other kids missing out, what are the schools doing for situations like that? Sort of what I'll call the extreme where the student doesn't speak one word of English. What happens in that situation?
Sure. I'm going to, I'm going to ask Marlene to talk about this a little bit, but I want to preface that with the fact that, you know, I'm particularly sensitive as my father came here from Dublin. He's about a nine-year-old, probably about third grade. You know, if you listen to my grandmother, I guess speaking English was debatable. It was pretty thick Irish road. But I, I recognize the question about supporting students with different levels of need who are in our classrooms, whether it be students who are acquiring another language, or have special education needs, or maybe social emotional needs or some other need. And I want to just acknowledge that in this case with somebody who's coming here from another country, to embrace the opportunities that exist in the United States, you know, through, you know, like you said, legal immigration, the benefit, there are benefits to the other students in that class who embrace somebody from another culture and learn. Maybe a little bit more of a global worldview in what an amazing country this is and the amount of opportunity that America presents to welcome people from other cultures and enrich our communities, as I'm sure this human being has. In, you know, that being said too, you know, that student needs supports and services and we provide that. And I'll ask Marlene to talk a little bit about what that looks like.
So we have significant supports in place for our multilingual learners. Some of our learners come here not knowing any English as the apparently the child that you described. So it looks different in different classrooms, mostly depending on the age of the students. In the very younger classes, we really use an immersion level where students are learning along with the rest of the class, learning to read, learning to write. In the upper grades, we have tutors, multilingual learners. The state has some requirements in place for students to pass a test. It's called the Lost Links. So every student who comes into our school who is a native speaker will have a plan. So we have a plan for them. They get support both in the classroom and also some tutoring. Most of our support, especially in those younger grades, is given through one-on-one coaching to the teacher. And sometimes that's in the classroom and sometimes that looks like pull-out professional development in small bursts. We also have T-Sol consultation through Aces, and that is paid for through the Title III grant. We also, through that money, are able to buy supplies. We're able to fund staff, and we're able to provide some summer enrichment experiences, all of which really help our students. And I want to sort of speak to what some of the strategies in place that really support what Dr. Solen talked about, about having students in our classrooms who are from a different country or speak a different language. Because some of the strategies that support multilingual learners are beneficial for all learners. For example, using visuals, really modeling things, giving examples, using word balls and anchor charts, and especially that peer-to-peer discussion where you're able to have some communication between the kids. And they refer to that, this sort of idea is universal design for learning, that if this is good for one student, then it's good for, it's also good for all students. And some of those things include like really watching someone's lips while they're talking. And if you're learning how to, how to read when you're little, that's good for everyone. That's not just good for the multilingual learner. That helps them.
The other thing, we talked about AI and the power of AI. In the few moments that Marlene was giving that update, I took a picture of the board that, and it translated into Dasha. Do the same thing with Dari, the languages that are proudly spoken in Afghanistan. So the students have it in its bank. If it goes lately, you can do it. I'm sure some of them will go to the future to take a picture and provide that level of access. So we use technology as well, you know, in this is Marlene, she did a great job of translating, but just wanted to speak to that contemporary opportunity as well.
Great. Ms. Gray?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, this is just a comment that I think I've probably conveyed this before to the superintendent, which is, for me personally, I have a serious tolerance for violence, violence, and striking violence, just to be clear about that. I also do think that there is a difference between, say, a kid or an adult. So, but generally speaking, just not acceptable. Thank you.
Mr. Gray?
I just want to follow up with the English language. So if a child was coming in with no English, so is this big of a test before they enter this assembly to know what if there is actually zero?
We do a lot when they register, getting information from their parents and talking with them about, have they been to school? Have they, have they come from another country? Were they, were they educated for how long? What did that look like? Sometimes we're able to get a transcript. Sometimes we're able to provide some mass support. I think it's really important to know that we put kids in the grade level that they should be in. We don't put them in a lower level because they speak a different language. We are, our expectation is they can do a great level of work. And that it's our job to support them to do that.
And are there tools that the student is allowed to use? Like, we know that there are powerful technologies that, you know, I use Google Translate a lot of times, but I've learned to do a lot of translation of pages. That was a lot of time ago, so I'm assuming it's a lot better now. But are they allowed to use those types of tools? Because I can only imagine, you know, if I went to a university and the school had a university, I'd probably be lost for a long time. So, is, how is, how is that gap? Like, is it, is it sort of like more realistic where the hope is to close the gap over a series of years and not to be like, you know, here we are in November, hope that the student is like, maybe can even speak, let's say, two full sentences of English or something. You know, like, is there, I'm assuming there's a true timeline or whatever to deal with that.
So Google Translate is certainly our friend, but it's also not something that we want a child, Google translating everything that's said all day, every day, that's not helpful for them. And it's exhausting. So a lot of it is this universal design for learning that I was talking about. But as part of what happens when they come here, they're given an assessment. And so I talked about that Lost Links assessment, that they take that measures, you know, listening, reading, and writing. Usually we do a report on that purely for the curriculum committee to show the growth that our students have made. And then once they exit, we know that they exited and passed the Lost Links test, but we also keep a close eye on them because we know that while they may have a proficiency, their parents might not have a proficiency. And oftentimes, these children are relied upon to translate for their families. So we try not to burden them and we try to help and support. Kevin Hanlon runs quite a few sessions for families after school during parent conferences and holds evening sessions at each of the elementary schools for the families who, which have children who are multilingual learners.
Dr. Gray?
Can I just add as a teacher of foreign language, to you, Adam, I would just say it would take you a lot longer to learn, to learn a foreign language than it would take a nine-year-old, especially if that nine-year-old is coming into a loving and accepting community at school where they do feel supported and are supported, but also where the, their peers in the classroom, they're interacting with them on a regular basis. They're going to learn English really fast.
I agree. I mean, I could attempt to take French in high school myself.
I could get you there, Adam.
Any other more bonus questions for the superintendent?
I just want to say, first off, I am the living proof of a first-generation immigrant. I came in the Reagan administration of the tail end of the Vietnam War. And I just, because it's American Education Week, I just want to give a shout out to my past teachers who brought me to this point in my life. And back then, and I, you know, they didn't have many tools. So technology has advanced, thank goodness, because they did many attempts. Immersion was one of the strategies that they used. But now that we have opportunities to at least test kids in with Lost Links to figure out exactly where to place them, I just, I'm proud, I'm proud of us. I'm proud of this country because we evolved them to, you know, acknowledge that we need to support our English language learners, our multilingual learners here. And so I, you know, I'd like to say I'm a successful product of public education. So thank you, my past teachers, my future self, it's the cloud. So, any other thoughts?
Hearing none. We're moving on to the next item, which is actually new business of the chair report. I just have a couple of comments before we adjourn. First off, again, I want to take a moment to reflect on the KU conference because it was a pretty uplifting theme as Dr. Solen and Mr. Kervy, I mentioned earlier, the theme of unity and so forth. So it was really great to experience Dr. Schreiber's opening statements, which was really powerful message. You know, unity, reminding us all of the importance of working together to overcome challenges. And just reinforcing the idea that when we approach our work with a unified purpose and mutual respect, we can achieve great things for our schools and our communities. And I just want to say again, and thank you to the families and parents that came out tonight because you're a part of that world. And it just makes us stronger and better. And then as we're approaching the season of gratitude, I want to take a moment to wish you a very happy Thanksgiving. This is a special time to reflect on the blessings in our lives, celebrate the warmth of our relationships, and then embrace the joy of connecting with those who matter the most. So may your Thanksgiving be filled with love, laughter, and moments that create and are cherished. And whether you're spending time with family, friends, or colleagues, may your gatherings be full of appreciation and unity, which is the theme. So thank you for all that you do to contribute to our community, your dedication, support, and collaboration. They definitely continue to make a meaningful difference. So again, wish you and your loved ones a wonderful holiday filled with gratitude and joy. The other items that I do need to mention are upcoming meetings. We have Monday, December 2nd, which is like we mentioned earlier, I think it's my title, Mr. Zansky, for the calendar committee? Okay, December 3rd is what the new date is. And then Monday, December 2nd is the policy meeting. Right? Yes, thank you. And then we move to December 9th, which is again curriculum committee meeting. All of these are held at Homestead. And then Thursday would be our Board of Education Business Meeting, which is, it looks like it's at 7:45 at Town Council Chambers. So please come out and gain support. As far as the school calendars concerned, we have November 28th and 29th, schools are closed for the Thanksgiving break. We move into December, December 23rd to January 1st. Just a reminder that winter break is coming and schools are closed. And then January 20th, we have Dr. Brent Vakim Jr. Day, schools and central office will be closed as well. And then the other exciting season, budget season, so here are the meeting dates as of current. January 9th, Superintendent Solen will be presenting the budget at Town Council Chambers, 7:30. January 14th will be at Dodge Middle School, and that will be the opportunity for public budget review and administrative review of accounts. January 16th, Town Council Chambers as well, is the Board of Education Business Meeting. And then January 21st, another public budget review and administrative review of accounts. January 23rd, public informational meeting, board members' response to the superintendent's budget and adoption of, possibly adoption of Board of Education budget. And then lastly, we have January 30th, if needed, a special meeting of Board of Education to adopt the Board of Education budget. So those are the items. Miss Ma'am? Okay, so correction, Thursday, December 19th, our board meeting is at 7:30, still at Town Council Chambers. Thank you for the question. That's it. I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, before you go ahead.
Sorry, sorry if I missed it. I heard you mention the calendar committee is December 3rd, and now that we're in calendar, I'm seeing as I'm too concerned with the days. Is that right?
It's December 3rd.
It's December 3rd.
December 2nd is just in here.
I think we just have a different paper. Any other? Thank you for the question. Dr. Gray?
How those dates for the round break?
December 16th. Snow day, red day. Do we even get something going? I don't know. And December 18th, it'd be the red day. What's, do we have a time? Do we reach? No. So cart hats and shovels coming? Great. Awesome. Okay, so call for a motion to adjourn, please. Ms. Cullen, is there a second? Mr. Gray? Always in favor of adjournment, please? unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you again everybody for coming.